... zoning and building committee to order, let the minute taker please call the roll.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Messina. Alderman Woods.
Here, I declare a quorum. Next, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Of April twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
What, what, no, I was going too quick, we have a question.
No, I don't have a question, but just try and get the motion, who may I ask?
All right, we'll slow down. I'm sorry. It's your board, I'm sorry. Mr. Woods. Oh, stepped my bounds, I'm sorry. All right, Mayor Portman. To the floor.
Okay, so who made the motion?
Mike, Tony, second. Questions? No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next, report and recommendation, Metro Station signage. Take it away, Mr. Cage.
Thank you, Chairman. So, as you will recall, this, this program started in conjunction with the, the new city hall sign out, out front. The intent was, where, where this started was, um, should I get the? Apparently not. That's on. Apparently so. Anyway, um, I apologize for that. So, where this initially started was, it was, um, we were looking at one sign, and the information will come up momentarily, but we were looking at one new sign on the, what it would be the south side of the metro station. Thank you, Mr. York, which is this sign. So, this is on the south side of the metro station. The existing sign is a white, it's a faded sign that conceal, is a sign, and it also conceals the HVAC equipment at the metro train station. So, the intent was to roll out the new brand, match the new signs on this side of the metro station. And then, when we came to committee, um, a number of months ago, when we were talking about the city hall sign, we were looking into this sign, replacing this sign as well, and the direction was that if we were going to change one, let's look into changing a couple of the other signs at the train station. Thank you. So, that it can be, the, the, the new signs and the new branding can be seen from Irving Park in a couple of different directions. What that led to was a conversation, sorry, wrong way, conversation with Metro, because that was the direction provided, obviously. We need to get Metro onboard and approve the signage. Metro is, has approved the signs. Their condition was that all four signs would be changed. So, we, we went from one sign to possibly two or three signs, to four signs. So, that is the information that you have in front of you today, changing, there's three existing blue Metro signs, and then there's the one faded city sign. So, we're looking at four signs. And, yeah, it's, sorry about that, I don't think that's going to translate too well, but essentially, that's Landmark Sign Company, their proposal. They're the company we've used prior for the entry sign and the new city hall sign. For all four signs, we're looking for a not-to-exceed amount of thirty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. And with that, if anyone has any questions?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Other questions? Alderman Catalano.
That includes installation as well?
Yes. Mr. Cage?
Yes, it includes installation. The only thing it does not include would be the additional work, as with our other signs for hooking up to power, to illuminate it.
We have. And, and, go ahead, Alderman Eugene Wesley. How much that would cost?
Typically, well, we're dealing with four signs, but the good news is, the metro station, it's, it's our facility. We're checking it tomorrow in terms of the runs, but I was out there today, we don't have a long run
Right.
to, to hook it up, so I know, for example, the city hall sign, there was a longer run to fire up that sign, and it was approximately two thousand dollars. There's four signs, but the runs aren't that big, so I would imagine in that ballpark.
Nope. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? There being none, roll call?
Do I have to put a dollar in my motion, or not to exceed it?
You can, you want, but then you'd have to expand upon the dollar amount that's there, I don't think that we.
No, I just found that true.
I think we're good.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes, that passes. Thank you, Mr. Cage. Items to be considered at future meetings, street banner purchase, June fourteenth. Anything else, anybody? There being none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned. Next up?
Public Health, Safety, Judiciary and Ethics Committee, it's called order. Let the minutes reflect. All Aldermen are the same as the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee. I need an approval of the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. We're going to go on to a report and recommendation, Chief Vesta, regarding replacement of squad four oh two.
So, tonight, in this current fiscal year, we actually have three squad cars scheduled for replacement. Tonight, we're just looking to replace one of those squad cars. Squad car's a two thousand fourteen utility interceptor. We're looking to replace it with a two thousand eighteen utility interceptor. Following the scoring guidelines that we work with the garage, it's already down to fifty percent scoring. It's my understanding there's some mechanical issues that are going on with it, so we're recommending that we replace car four oh two now. The other two squads, like we did last year, we'll be looking at those later in the fiscal year, not replacing them just because they're on the schedule, but we can, we can hold off for another period of time for the other two. So, we'll come back to, probably sometime around winter, with a decision if we need to replace anymore at that time.
Mayor Nunzio?
Chief, let's say, at the end of the year, you still feel that those cars are good, what happens? I know we created the SURF fund, so does it, we just push these cars into the next year, and that money would move over to that, the SURF fund would move over, is that how it works, just in, Chief?
Sure, so what we do each year with the, with, with the budgeting process, too, is, we believe it was last year or the year before, we pushed off one of the purchases because it just wasn't ready to be replaced, so we pushed it into the next budget year in the SURF. And then, when the budget's approved each year, then that next fiscal year is planned to be, to be used. And then, of course, the SURF fund, those monies weren't spent, so, but it would move to the next fiscal year.
Follow-up? So, that's what I'm saying, is, so the SURF fund, it's not like some of the accounts, at the end of the budget year, they go down to zero, and then we reallocate this, this money, so we have the money ready to go.
Right, okay. Yeah, that's correct, and that fund was intended to be a contributions to it each year, so there's not ups and downs, but kind of a steady contribution to that, so.
Alderman Jacob?
This is more of a technical question, but how do we know, like, on a vehicle, regular engine hours versus idling hours? I see, like, they note that in the, is there a computer that does that, or how do, how do you guys know that?
Yeah, actually, the cars now, they track, those are tracked right in the vehicles. I know in the past, they, they'd have to put, like, engine hour meters on or whatever, but those are tracked right now, and actually, I think on most of the cars, you can pull them right up on the, on the display.
Follow-up?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I'll make a motion to approve the new squad car replacement.
Second.
Not to exceed twenty-seven dollars, five hundred and ten dollars and zero cents.
Got a motion, we got a second, any questions? All in favor, let's do a roll call, Eileen. Do a roll.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Chief, can we go into the replacement of our incident command vehicle, please?
Thank you. So, as, as most of you see, at Prairie Fest is where it's most obvious. We have a, a blue command van that's capable of towing our, our trailer. The command van is now twenty-five years old. It's really not safe to drive. It was a, we actually got it as a, under the Department of Defense LSO program. We actually picked it up from a military base, probably fifteen years ago, when it was about ten years old. So, we outfitted that pretty minimally, and then the trailer was actually a part of our Citizens Emergency Response Team grant from the federal government. We were able to get that for, pretty much a hundred percent paid for by the federal government. So, we're at a point that we need to replace the incident command vehicle, just because the blue truck really shouldn't be driven anymore. Needs to be retired. And, so, what we're looking to do is replace it with a all-in-one vehicle that can house, probably, we're looking at two-seated positions inside, so we can manage incidents. And it's not just for Prairie Fest, but it's going to be for, there's a lot of, right now, to take out an incident command vehicle, you've got to get the blue, you've got to hook up the trailer, and then have someone that can drive a truck and a trailer, and get it to a location. This, what we're looking to do is replace it with a Ford Transit van, the, the highest one that they have, and the longest one that they have. And then, that would allow any of our personnel, whether it be sworn or CSO, to be able to take something out to a scene. So, in addition to Prairie Fest, we'd be using it for Memorial Day Parade. Incidents where we're searching for lost, missing kids or adults, which we've had several of those cases, any type of standoffs, any type of large crime scenes or death scenes, it would just allow us to manage the incident. And then, what would be, we would be doing is, once we purchased the vehicle, we're actually meeting with an outfitter tomorrow. Actually, two different outfitters to see different options to outfit the inside of the vehicle. Where we, we're looking to put a couple desks, have access to all our dispatching software, our report-writing software, you know, weather, weather TV, and our radios, and what, we had budgeted this year up to sixty thousand dollars. Some towns are buying, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar command vehicles. We think we can do this for under sixty total, and still have something that fits our needs. If we have a much larger incident, whether it be, let's say, a major storm rips through, or an extended standoff or something like that, we're going to have more assets coming in anyways that have access to larger command vehicles. So, we don't need, you know, the Taj Mahal command vehicles, but this will allow us to run the types of incidents that we see throughout the year. So, then what we would look to do is order, it's a two thousand eighteen Transit three fifty, and then that would be the, the highest one and the longest one that they have, and we could comfortably fit in two positions, and then probably a, a bench seat on the side, and then that would allow us to manage incidents on a, on a good basis.
Well, I know after a motion is made and a second is put out there, then we open it up for discussion. So, I see three hands raised now. In the meantime, I'd like to make a motion
Second.
To, uh, did you get that, Eileen? Just work off the recommendation, that we replace number four thirteen, vehicle four thirteen, with a two thousand eighteen Ford Transit three fifty, in a not-to-exceed amount of thirty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Any questions? Alderman Jacob?
Two questions. First question, as far as capacity, like, I know now, like, for Prairie Fest and things, I mean, it's good kind of used for cooling down and things for the officers. Will they have the same amount of seating capacity for personnel in there?
Yeah, what, what we're thinking is, is two seated positions to be able to have, you know, both communications and/or, you know, command to run a situation with, with a small bench on the side, but our plan is not to get rid of the trailer. We'll still pull that out to Prairie Fest, because that has a air conditioner, too, and that's probably something that we'll be able to use for events such as if we have a roadside safety check or other instance, where we can keep some barricades and cones and other stuff in there, and then they can cool off in the trailer as opposed to the command vehicle. We're really going to want to really discourage
Yeah.
a lot of people from being inside of there, so they can just manage the, the fest.
Do you have a follow-up, Alderman?
As far as communications equipment, is that still going to be in the trailer, or is there going to, is all the communications equipment going to be in this one?
This will all be moved to the, to the van, and then, because if we have any incident, it can just be pulled out, just the van. We don't need the trailer, we don't need to hook it up, but if we wanted to, we could. But our, our goal is to be able to pull it up, you know, if we had something happen right now, within ten minutes, we can have that on scene and be able to manage it out of there. You know, that's going to, inside of it, we're going to include maps and things where we can mark our perimeters and where we're designated people, and, you know, there's a lot of documentation that goes when you have a SWAT situation or a, just any large-scale search for missing people, missing kids or elderly people, you know, you really need a command post to kind of run that incident.
Got enough follow-ups for now. Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yeah, I have a two-part question, if you don't mind. Chief, are these brand-new vehicles, or are these a used vehicle?
This is a brand, this will be a brand-new vehicle, and so, I would anticipate, you know, at least, at least probably ten to fifteen years out of this. It's not going to have a lot of mileage on it, so this is going to be a long-term vehicle.
I guess my follow-up would be, being a former military person myself, are you aware that in the Southwest Desert, we have millions of these vehicles sitting there, not being used, that the government could give us? That are the same, the same thing you're asking for? I'm, I'm, I'm not saying you didn't do your homework, I'm just asking, there is a place out there we can go to and get them, because as war stops, everything goes somewhere. There's two thousand, two hundred Abrams sitting out there, brand-new. There's all kinds of military vehicles sitting out there, brand-new, that could be used for city use instead of military use, and that's, we get it, thanks to nothing for it.
And, we are a part of the LSO program, and that's where we were able to get the previous command vehicle from. The thing is, we're not looking to get an armored-type vehicle.
No.
We've also searched the, the military database for ambulance-type vehicles, something that could be adjusted, that would be maybe a little bit smaller. So, we have looked, but, you know, generally with getting those two, and what we found with the last one is, you know, right now, we'd be getting a eight-to-ten-year-old, probably, vehicle, you know, and then you still have to do the outfitting and everything else when it comes. So, we are aware of it, we are a part of that, and we've, we've done searches for that, but we just didn't find anything that matched this time, so.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley, did you have a question?
One question. Greg, this will also go mutate if we need, if another town requests it, right?
Absolutely. We work pretty closely with, especially, the, the DuPage County towns around us, you know, Atascosa, Lewis, Benserville, and then Addison. Certainly, we've used, Atasca's, you know, they had a van that we used for undercover operations at one point. Benserville, we partner with them, so.
So, this is a mutate agreement with that?
Definitely, and any type of situation that even happens in one of those four towns, we're all helping each other, and we're usually, all four of those towns will be on the scene anyways.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Jacob, you have a follow-up?
Yeah.
I want to go open. I am the caller, please. Open. Pardon me?
Aye.
You have a question?
Yeah, one more question. So, could we give, could we give them direction, because I don't know how long it's going to take them to get the stuff to outfit this, could we, could we just grant them, go ahead and outfit it now? Because if we need it by Prairie Fest, he's going to have to come back to us for the equipment purchase, too, I mean, when we have it by then.
Chief?
Well, the one thing is, if this passes tonight, and it passes at next, at council next Thursday, we're going to order it right away. And then, the outfitting, we're going to be transferring a lot of the stuff, and, you know, getting some desks built in there, but that'll be under professional service, you know, under the purchasing authority that we currently have in the budget, that, I'm not anticipating coming back to say we need all this equipment to go in it, because I, it, it's going to be under the, the authority that we have.
How does it fall into professional services?
Because we're going to have a company that installs a desk, some drawers, some cabinets up top, and then we're going to transfer, just like we do when we outfit the squads.
I'll ask you.
We take all the equipment out of the squad, and we put it in a new squad, and that's all under professional services.
I'll ask you after me.
Okay.
There being no other questions, please. Call the board.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, the ethics code update, we're looking at June and July. And with there being no further business, I need a motion
Second.
for adjournment.
You made a motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Called order, the Public Works Committee. Minute taker reflect that all Aldermen are still here. Approval of minutes from Public Works Committee, regular meeting, April twelfth, twenty eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I got a report and recommendation for approval of a squad creek project in intergovernmental agreement between the city of Wooddale and DuPage County, that's my motion.
Second motion.
Questions? Mr. York? Glenn Dry?
Just people have questions. More than happy to answer.
You have something?
When, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
When does that project start?
The project is still finalizing design. We still have not got the permit back from the Army Corps of Engineer. So, once that gets back and everything is buttoned up, and we know exactly what we're going to produce out there, we still got to go to bid. In June, we're going to come back with fourteen easements, so that'll be a good time. Mr. Sizmarsky will have to read a lot of easement language, so that'll be awesome for us.
He likes that.
He does enjoy that.
I love reading.
So, we're hoping for late summer for that project to, to go off.
Any questions? Need a roll call on this, or, no? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I have a warrant of a contract to the Americana Landscape Group with the, for the city hall aesthetics project, in the not-to-exceed amount of sixty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars, forty-one cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Mr. Eugene Wesley?
So, the new lights that we're going to put in there, we have to decide now?
That's, that falls under bollards on the items to be considered for future meetings. City bollards. This is aesthetics, it's not part of the bollards project.
I understand, but my question is, once we do the standards, do the okay, are we going to give this stuff up to the locals?
Mr. York?
No, the bollards will not be in areas where there'll be plantings.
Questions? All of us in favor, uh, we need a mo, a roll call, sixty-two thousand? I need a roll call for sixty-two thousand dollars, so, yeah.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Eugene Catala, I mean, I'm sorry, Alderman Catalano.
Yes, yes.
Something with that seat.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Next, I have approval of a contract with Robinson Engineering for the engineering services of Irving Park Road Light Project, in the not-to-exceed amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? No questions?
Mike, we made the motion, first.
Yeah. Any questions? No questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Mermis?
Just, uh, going back to the previous item on the city hall landscaping, we did throw in the packet some information on that hardscaping that the council had asked for, the stand, concrete, staining work. We were wondering if there's going to be direction on that, to do anything with that as well.
Any part of landscape that I was told, so.
I know, but if, if you wanted us to investigate that more, or you don't want to do that anymore?
Well, as far as I recall, we went with investigating, right, as far as finding out what's better.
Yes, and in the, the last page of the packet for that, there's a sidewalk enhancement study that each are being put together with pricing, and pros and cons to each of the, of the three different ones that were asked to, we, to look at. So, I guess, if we want to have direction to move forward, if not, we can deal with it at a later time.
We can't throw that in tonight, can we, in direction for council to go, or
No.
city staff to move forward on?
No, we would just take some direction and then bring it back with, you know, more detail, but we're looking to see if you liked any of these avenues.
I guess I could open it up for question.
Or do you just want to do the landscaping and then come back to it at a later time?
Yeah, we'll just move forward with what you have. Anybody have any qualms with moving forward with direction to the staff? Move forward with project, with looking for project for stamping and everything? It's Jacob?
The direction they're looking for, they, they gave us three choices, is I think, I think what Matt's getting at, is that correct?
Mr. York?
Yeah, I mean, that was the, the kind of the thing we have, gave you, you asked for three options. We gave you three options as part of this, because now that the price for the landscaping came in so far under budget, that we would have extra length or aesthetics dollars for this project. If you'd like, we could bring this back as another discussion topic at, on a future meeting. That's fine, we can bring it back when we bring back the bollards.
Let me get the council's, I mean, if you guys all choose to do something, we'll put it on the future agenda, future meeting. Do you want, are you, have you picked something out that you liked? I mean, is anonymous?
Did you look at it?
Choosing, have you guys all saw what they're under?
It's there, but there's three different types.
These are the, the.
I saw, there's three.
Yeah, so we have to choose, we have to give direction which ones we're looking at.
But those are price estimates, so they were, you guys asked for the options for price estimates, and then we would drill down, we would drill down on one of them if you liked them.
We could also have the call of city council, or city staff, and wait in there, vote those, too.
So, I mean, we can bring a, why don't we just put it on for future agenda items, we'll bring it back when we bring the bollards.
It's already budgeted item, Craig.
Yeah, we'll bring it back with the bollards, and we'll have a future, a further discussion.
This item is already budgeted.
Of course. Okay.
No, I'm not calling on you. Mr. Sorrentino?
Can I go forward with option?
No, Mr. Sorrentino is.
You mentioned that what was originally budgeted for became in under that.
Became light on this landscaping.
Additional dollars that would be needed, would that bring us back to the original budget?
Yes.
That didn't include that in the first place.
Yes.
So, it's an even steamer.
Correct.
Additional dollars that were given.
It's the cover. It covers, correct.
What about the bollards?
The bollards are a separate item on the other. Mr. Mermis?
We just have to choose, the, the goal tonight was to choose which idea you liked, concrete, pavers, stamped, colored concrete, or thermoplastic, and then we still have to bid it out. These are just estimates, but we need a material choice.
I hate to say it, but Mr. Woods?
Well, thank you.
I'd like to make, make a motion to direct staff to move forward on option number one, the concrete pavers in the amount of, whatever that is.
Roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
The purchase of a Peterbilt aerial lift truck from JX Enterprises Incorporated, in the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and zero cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Steve Wesley?
Yeah.
Forty-eight feet?
Forty, forty.
Forty-seven and a half, forty-seven, forty-eight.
Forty-some feet, yeah. So, our current one, our current one goes.
So, our current one, our current one goes about thirty-two feet.
It's nice, I've seen prototypes. Any other questions? Catalano?
Yeah, what's gonna happen to the old one that we have?
You're gonna drive it.
Mr. York?
Um, well, we could, we could give it to the aldermen for their personal vehicle, but, um, are probably, um, we'll probably put it up for public auction. Yeah, there's really no use to having two of those.
Is there any way to say we could sell it to someone in town that does that work?
That would not be my call to make.
You said to the council, I guess, I, would they be adapted to that, or? Mr. Woods? Again, I don't propose, but.
Well, I had a question before that, but I'll take that question, too. Mr. York, you, what do we use this truck for? What are its functions multiple?
Mr. York?
Um, we use it for multi, flexible functions, um, repairing streetlights, um, doing, uh, tree trimming, um. Uh, we use it for, to, uh, put Christmas lights up in different locations, um, to, yeah, the banners that go up on, uh, the poles along Irving Park Road.
We need to get up, um, onto the roof at the, uh, train station and do some work, so, um, really, this is made to be multifunction.
Uh, not just for lighting, or not just for trees, but for, to be able to do a lot of different things with it.
Secondly, I think we have to offer that truck out to the public, that we can't just sell it to an individual.
No, I didn't say individual, I mean, if there's someone in town that has a business like that, could we not offer it to them first?
I don't believe so.
We can check with the actual attorney?
No, I would actually, I would, I would, I would actually like to see, just for the, for simple fact, that there are people out here that have trucking companies, who have certain kinda companies that can, that, and I know there's maybe of, the mayor's gonna jump in here, but, I'm sure there's somebody out there that can make something of what we do, so, mayor?
What would have to be done is, you'd have to have a, like a silent bid, because you can't just pick, even if it's a local guy, can't just, you know. Well, it has to be a silent bid, and you have to have a starting point or whatever, that's why it's probably, you put it out to public auction, those same people can go to the public auction and bid on it as well, but, it's been done, you'd have to have a silent bid where the bids are all returned, you, you want, this is the minimum bid you gotta have, and then people come in, depending, they might come in a hundred dollars over, a thousand dollars over, you never know, but, you can't just.
I understand that, I, I understand that, and I understand that we're only fourteen thousand per, under fourteen thousand person community, so it's not like we're seventy, eighty, a hundred thousand, where this might be a big deal, where you have twenty different companies vying for the same vehicle, but, a- as anybody on this council knows, there are certain members of this town that do work, might benefit from it, might be able to help out, or, just a, just a question, just a, just a thought, let it hold on. So, the kind, the, there's a, just send a note, or there's a motion and a second? Do we need a, we need a, uh, roll call, please?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Mr. Jacob?
Um, just, just a question on the height, I know you, the height's forty-seven versus thirty-five foot. I mean, do we really need forty-se- forty-seven feet?
Yes. Mr. York?
Yes, we do. Because, I mean, you get to top of streetlight poles, streetlight poles are thirty or so, thirty-five feet tall, forty feet tall, now you got guys standing on their tippy toes at forty feet in the air.
I wanna make sure it's safe.
Or, or I got my, I got my bucket straight up and down, which isn't safe, so if it's forty-seven feet, I can still have, I can still have a nice tilt to it, which allows our people to do things a lot safer, so, yes.
I just wanted to make sure that we needed that actually.
Yep.
Roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries, next I have approval of a contract for the fiscal year twenty nineteen sanitary sewer rehabilitation design, and construction of observation with RJN Group, and the amount not to exceed fifty-nine thou- fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars, that is, there's no change on that? Does he, there's no change or anything, it's fifty-nine thousand, eight eighty?
We spent the change.
I'm gonna hold it to eighty, eighty, and zero change, that is my motion.
And Gene?
Second.
Gene second.
Any questions? Then, Mr. Catalano?
So, this is just sanitary sewers, got nothing to do with storm sewer, correct?
Correct.
Yes, this is sanitary sewer, to keep the storm sewer out of the sanitary sewer.
Right.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
And aye.
Roll call, please?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Next, I have approval of agreement between city of Wooddale and corrective asphalt materials for the pavement preventative maintenance, and the not to exceed amount of thirty-five thousand dollars, is one hundred and ninety, or thirty-five thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents, that is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Uh, Eugene Wesley?
So, Matt, last year was the first time we, we, we used this, this thing, so, did we get any feedback on how, how it went, um?
Mr. York?
Yeah, the feedback, um, I think for the most part, it was pretty good, um, there was, um, some kinda misunderstanding about how the product actually works, and, and what it does, and, um, how it, um, looks over the course of, over the course of time. Um, when we put it in last year, we had a pretty, pretty dry spell after that, so, it wasn't, um, going back to the regular asphalt color as quickly as some people would have liked. Um, but I think, um, with a little extra rainfall, um, and also the traffic of the roads, uh, we do have to realize, like Alderman Sizmarski said earlier, we are a smaller town of thirteen thousand people, and some of these roads just do not get that much traffic. So, the less traffic that you have, the longer it's gonna take for the roads to get back to, let's call it asphalt color, versus kinda that greenish, gray, kinda dirty tint that it had to it, so, um, other than that, um, I think that was probably the biggest issue that we had, we also, um, there was some little bit of confusion about, uh, when it's getting put down, and when I can drive on it, and, um, um, Grant has been working up some mailers, and we've already sent our first mailers out to the people that are on these streets, saying that, hey, this is gonna happen this year, we're gonna send out another one, information is on our website, um, some frequently asked questions, uh, why does it look this way, why, when is it not gonna look this way anymore, so, um, I think we kinda learned, a little growing pains in the first year, but, uh, I think we're, uh, well on our way to a better second year.
So, this, so this, I'm sorry.
Hello?
So, this, this has worked, that it's worth continuing this program, we, we think we could outspan our, a little longer on those streets than, that we did it on, right? Okay.
Well, I mean, the goal, the, the product says that it's gonna last five, make streets last five to ten y- longer years, I mean, they, this isn't like, they even start the project last year, they've been doing it for a long time, so.
I totally understand that, thank you.
Mary, answer.
Yeah, and I think, Matt, you answered it already, uh, I know Grant had set up those new cards, and I was gonna ask, when are those going out? Cause there was a lot of confusion, cause the streets look kinda brown and sandy and all that stuff, so, okay.
Yeah, so, um, this project is probably gonna take place right after the Fourth of July, so, um, probably towards the end of June, middle of the end of June, we'll be sending out the, uh, the follow-up card. Yeah, there's, I believe there's three totals, um, mailers that they're gonna get, but, um, uh, the last, the, the next one will come out sometime in the middle of June, probably, first of the middle of June.
Mr. Jacob?
Um, and the, as far as the color, all, all the streets throughout the town went back to the normal color, we didn't have any where, we had an issue with it, did we?
I, I haven't heard of anything since, like the fall.
Before we do roll call, I'd ask you, you being public works right there, have you seen the new plastic bottle, street asphalt, at all? Will they use the plastic recyclable bottles in the asphalt, and where that stands, if you know anything about, I mean, I don't wanna put you on the spot, if you don't know, don't ask her.
I've heard about it, but I don't, haven't done any studies on it.
You don't know anybody in the area or studies that, could you possibly look it up, and, I mean, no hurry? I would just like, be interested if, obviously bottles end up in the ocean, they end up everywhere, we can help out, that might be a benefit to us.
Yep.
No more questions, I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries, next I have approval of a contract with RW Dunhaman for the, to perform energy, emergency patches on Addison Road due to water main breaks, and the not to, not to exceed amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred forty dollars and ninety-nine cents, that is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Eugene Wesley?
I, I only have one que- why, what, it ain't emergency repair for I'm concerned right now, because it's been patched up for so long, so, do you, so you're doing emergency purchase, do we not go out for bid for this? No, it says approved, patching emergency patch for Addison Road due to weather.
Mr. York?
Okay, so, um, this isn't an emergency purchase, we went out, we got quotes from, we asked four different companies, um, the price was less than twenty thousand dollars, so we don't have to go out to bid for it, um, they were emergency repairs, but it's not an emergency purchase, if it was emergency purchase, then Mr. Mermis would have put something in the manager's report and said, we've already done it, we have not done this yet. Um, but it's to repair the three, three main breaks that we had on Addison Road, which are different than a normal patching program, because we have to provide twelve inches of concrete and three inches of asphalt on top of it.
You have a back, you have rebuttal?
Nah, I'll ask it after me.
It's, yeah, it may just be semantics.
Any other questions? You have a question? Tito?
I've already, so I've got my two questions, you'll allow me?
Before we go back to that, maybe the one prior to that, F, looking into the plastic bottle asphalt, maybe you can look to see if they're looking for someone to do a prom, use as a town to help out.
We'll look into it.
So, just another look at it. Sure you don't have any, Mr. Woods, I'd greatly like, love to hear from you.
I have thoughts of Alderman Sizmarski.
I would love to hear from you, are you sure?
I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and, uh.
All right, I'm giving it to you.
Your committee, but, uh.
I'm giving it to you, one, twice, three times, no. Roll call, please?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Those being clear, passes. Before I get to future items, uh, I do have something for the city manager, and I don't know if, Matt, were you able to give me the feet for the alley, and, no?
No, no.
It's okay. Um, there's a, there's a strip between, on the south side, we did the, all the aldermen remember, we did the alleyways, concrete alleyways before the pass, I think it was two public works directors were here, we concreted our alleyways because of garbage trucks, uh, one has seemed to have been pushed away, or, that public works director seemed to have forgot about that one, there's one behind the, one behind the American Legion and that strip mall, Edgewood, south, south of Irving on Edgewood. We have, we have pipes down there, and these trucks just seem to be coming through there on their back end of their tour, and they're heavy as hell, and, before they crush our pipes, and we have to expend X money, I'd like to see maybe, there's any kind of money we can come out of the CIP, or of the budget, to put a s- small spot of asphalt through there, it's probably no longer than two hundred feet, I mean, everybody knows where the Amer- American Legion is. It's right at the border. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, we'll get some information, and then get back to it.
Please do, cause it's, uh.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah, we, I've been on this a while, and I, it was supposed to be taken care of, and it got dropped, and then, we've had a couple of managers in between. Mayor? No, it's our, it's ours.
Yeah, I remember something about there, so we were looking at that alley, and it's naturally, it dead ends, right, and?
In the Bensonville.
Right, on the other side, it's Bensonville, but, I'm not sure if, somebody had told me the alley was Bensonville's and not ours, so I.
That's why I said it sounds familiar.
Yeah, I don't recall, I don't really.
It's, it's ours, because that strip mall is ours, that strip mall in front, with the smoke zone, that whole strip mall, that is ours, all the way to, we just went over this with Mr. Cage, can attest to this, that's the spot where the American Legion was putting the garbage, and had a right to put the garbage on the other side of the stone, in Bensonville property, so, there's a narrow, maybe six inch path between the two buildings of the, what is it, La Saco Tile?
Oh, the tile place.
The tile place, and the other one, there's about six inch gap between there, that is our border all the way through, so everything on that side is ours, just so you know, and, that's where the, Mr. Cage knows that there was an issue with the garbage being put on their property, so, it's, I know the whole area very well.
We can, we can bring this alley to a future meeting, um, and just so everybody knows, it's a hundred and fifty by twenty feet.
Thank you very much, I didn't think you had it, I'm sorry. Give me that, looked like you didn't.
Sure, I had it the whole time.
Thanks for being all over it. Uh, anything else for future meetings, you got streetlight surveys in June, and city bollards in June, anything else? Mayor?
I've been getting a lot of requests about streetlights and possibly putting them on all streets, so I don't know if the council wants to talk about that at some point.
Well, in rebuttal to, the mayor, every corner should have a streetlight for safety, period, it's an intersection, correct, chief? I'm, just asking the chief, every corner should have a streetlight, correct, at intersection?
The brighter the better.
I mean, technically, if, if there's a car coming off a side street, with a dark street, coming onto a lit street, should have a interse- uh, light, correct? Mr. York, do you agree, or no?
Sure.
Mr. Mermis?
I'll just, usually, uh, finance director Wilson, he has this piece of paper, and he has this pen, it clicks, and then throughout the year, he notates this down for CIP discussion time, and that's when we usually plug it in somewhere.
I also have a survey that I sent out.
So, if he were here, he'd click it, and then he'd write it down, but I, I typed it down instead, so.
No clicking?
No clicking noise? Can you click for us?
Thank you for telling us, cause we wouldn't have known without the click.
And there are surveys to be done, that anybody can walk around with, I've recently done it myself, so, uh, anyone else?
I, I agree with the mayor, and the people that are calling, we need to light up the city. For health and safety, remember, priority of government is public safety, number one priority.
Thank you. Mr. Wesley?
I'd really like to revisit our whole, uh, city light policy. We might wanna make some changes on it, so.
As to... Anything else? Motion adjourned?
I'll move.
Second.
It's a move.
All in favor?
Well, you're all in favor.
Aye.
You wanna stay? Wanna stay?